Oral comments on the proposed construction permit for Sunshine Industries Ready Mix Concrete Batch Plant. Copies of the draft construction permit, the statement of basis, and a dust control plan have been made available for review and comment on the district's proposed actions webpage. I know many of you may have attended or watched last week's planning commission meeting, so I want to highlight some important differences between that proceeding and tonight. First, the district's permitting process provides notice to the public, an opportunity for public comment, and a hearing for oral comments when a hearing is requested. The public comment period on the proposed draft construction permit for Sunshine Industries began on October 6th and ends tomorrow, November 11th. Tonight, the public hearing is being held both in person and online via video teleconference. Second, I'd like to thank Steve Sullivan, Vice Chair of the Louisville Metro Air Pollution Control Board, and our other board members who are joining us tonight for hosting this meeting. The board's role is to be sure that tonight's public hearing meets the standards for such proceedings. The district's role tonight is to hear from you. The reason for that is that the district, not the board, is the decision maker on issuing permits. Procedures at the district's public hearing will follow KRS Chapter 77 in the district's regulations and will include a brief summary of the proposed permit by the district and comments, if any, from the applicant. Oral comments from those wishing to speak will follow. At the conclusion of the oral comments, the public hearing will be adjourned. Importantly, unlike the planning commission's public meeting where they may hear a case, take testimony, deliberate, and take final action, there is no discussion of the comments at the district's public hearing or any deliberation on the merits of the proposed action. Instead, all comments, whether in writing, in person, or online via video teleconference, will be compiled and responded to in a written response to comment document that will be shared when the final permit decision is made. It's also important to note that although our permitting process, that through the permitting process, the district determines only whether an applicant can meet air pollution regulations, and if so, writes and issues a permit that properly enforces those regulations. As such, public comments may impact the final permit by pointing out laws and regulations that may have been misapplied, technical errors, or case-by-case decisions that are not sufficient, including monitoring record-keeping or emissions testing requirements. The district cannot deny an application that meets air pollution laws and regulations or consider comments that request any action outside of its regulatory authority. Finally, I'd like to thank the district's industrial permitting staff for their work on this permit, and staff from across the agency for setting up and assisting with tonight's public hearing, and our earlier policy committee meeting. Thank you.
Thank you Director Hamilton. This public meeting held by the Louisville Metro Air Pollution Control Board is called to order and is being held pursuant to KRS Chapter 77 and district regulations. Notice of this hearing has been published pursuant to state law. This public hearing is being offered via video teleconference due to the COVID-19 outbreak. This hearing is being recorded. The purpose of this hearing is for the district to hear comments from the public on this permit. The board's role in this hearing is to host the hearing, and the district's role is to respond to comments and make a final decision on the permitting action. If you would like to make a comment here in person, please fill out a speaker card. Instructions on making oral comments via video teleconference have been included as part of the materials posted on the district's website for this public hearing. As a brief reminder, please raise your hand via video teleconference by clicking on the raise hand button next to your name in the participants list, or if you are joining by phone by pressing star three, and you will be called on. Substantive comments submitted today in the chat will also be incorporated in the record as written comments. If you are here in person, you will be called to the microphone. We will alternate speakers online and in person. Oral comments must be presented today. Comments must be concise. All comments will become a part of the hearing record. You will be allowed three minutes to speak. Please note our time curator in front of the room who will give you a signal right here, when you have one minute remaining and another when your time is expired. If you would like to make additional comments, we encourage you to submit them to airpermits@louisvilleky.gov. This hearing is being held for the construction permit for Sunrise Industries Ready Mix located at 13905 Aiken Road. The purpose of this hearing today is to collect written and oral comments for the district's consideration before making a final decision on the construction permit for Sunrise Industries' Ready Mix. All public hearings are conducted in an orderly manner and will be recessed if members of the audience are disruptive. The proceedings today are being recorded in accordance with district regulation 2.07. We have an assistant accounting attorney here to ensure we are following all public hearing requirements. Please note that today's hearing is a hybrid event that includes members of the audience joining virtually. As such, we ask that your director comes into the microphone to ensure you're audible and to those online in our recording the hearing, which we use to help us respond to your comments. If there is any time that there are no comments being taken, the hearing may be paused to allow others to join the hearing. After this hearing, if you have provided an email address on the sign-in sheet, you will be notified by email of the district's permit decision and availability of the district's comment and response document, which describes any changes to the permit from the draft to the final, and contains written responses to questions and comments raised at the hearing and provided within the comment period. This document will also be posted on the district's website under recent actions and available upon request. Matt King will provide a brief description of the district's permitting program.
Thank you Vice Chair Sullivan. Good evening, my name is Matt King. I'm the industrial permitting manager for the district. I'm going to provide a brief description today about the district's permitting program and how public comments are considered in making the final permit decisions. The Sunshine Industries Concrete Batch Plant is a FEEDUP source. FEEDUP stands for federally enforceable district origin operating permit. FEEDUP permits are an option for all potentially major sources that because of air pollution control devices and/or limited utilization are able to limit emissions to less than the major source threshold. In general, they are the middle-sized facilities between true minor sources and major sources we often refer to as Title V. An opportunity for hearing is provided for any permit for which there is significant public concern. This construction permit contains all monitoring, record-keeping, and reporting requirements in addition to all applicable standards. The federally enforceable portion of this permit is the 25-ton per year limits for particulate matter that preclude the facility from exceeding the major source threshold of 100 tons per year. The 25-ton limit also establishes this facility as a STAR-exempt facility, that is, the Strategic Toxic Air Reduction Program. Although there are several true minor source batch plants in Louisville, the majority of other batch plants are also categorized as FEEDUPs. The district is required to consider public comment as part of our permitting decisions. Comments from the public that can be incorporated into permit decisions are welcome. Relevant comments may include specific statements about the permit application and the proposed permit, or information indicating the operation of the facility poses a threat to human health or the environment. That could also raise issues with the district's review process or procedures, and lastly, express concerns that the issuance of the permit would cause violations of the district regulations or the Clean Air Act. Issues that are beyond the scope of the district's permitting authority, such as property values, zoning issues, or issues that are the responsibility of other governmental bodies not the district, are not considered in making the final permit decision. After the hearing and public comment period are complete, the district will review all comments. The district will make any appropriate changes to the permit. Once a final determination is made, the permit response to comments document will be posted on our recent actions page and sent to anyone who commented and provided their contact information. I want to thank everybody for coming out. Thank the two board members who are joining us and the staff that's helped with this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you Mr. King. Shannon Hosey will provide a brief description of the proposed construction permit. Ms. Hosey?
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Shannon Hosey, and I am the environmental engineer in the permitting section with the district. I'm going to briefly describe the proposed construction permits for Sunshine Industries. I'm trying to share my screen.
There it is.
Alright, there we go. The district received a construction application in June to build a concrete batch plant. Here is a process flow diagram. This diagram is included in the handout. This is a concrete batch plant and not a cement manufacturing plant. Concrete from this facility is composed of cement, cement supplement, sand, gravel, and stone. Once each raw material is transferred, it is fed by gravity to weigh hoppers, which combine the proper amount of each material based on client specifications. Then it's gravity-fed into mixer trucks and transported. The cement and cement supplement unloading, weigh hopper loading, and truck loading are all controlled by dust collectors. This shows the potential emissions from this project. These emissions are included in the handout. The total of PM10 potential emissions are 6.2 tons per year. The ones highlighted are controlled. The company has accepted a 25-ton per year limit for PM10 to be a STAR-exempt FEEDUP source. This shows the PM pound per hour limits and what equipment must be controlled to meet the limits, which are highlighted in green. This is also included in the handout. Emission points E3, E4, E9, and E11, which include the cement and supplement unloading to the silos, cement and supplement hopper, and truck loading must be controlled at all times. The dust collectors for cement and cement unloading have a control efficiency of 99.9%. Weigh hopper loading is 99.5%, and truck loading is 99.8%. Thank you.
Ms. Hosey, would a representative of Sunshine Ready Mix like to make a statement? Please raise your hand via video teleconference by clicking on the raise hand button next to your name in the participants list, or if you are joining by phone by pressing star three, and you will be called on. Please tell your name and title when you begin speaking. Do we have a representative either online or in person? Does anyone from the public wish to make a comment? Please raise your hand via video teleconference by clicking on the raise hand button next to your name in the participants list, or if you are joined by phone by pressing star three, and you will be called on. Please tell us your name and organization you may be representing, if any, when you begin speaking. Again, we will alternate between persons present and online.
Randy Strovo?
My name is Randy Strovo. I represent the Lake Forest Community Association, which essentially is the homeowners association for the Lake Forest community. I'm here with my colleague David Spinnard and our expert Dr. Cole Brokamp. He's an epidemiologist at the University of Cincinnati, and Dr. Scott Simonton, I think, is online right now. He is an environmental engineer at Marshall University. First, I want to say thank you, Ms. Hamilton, Mr. King, board and staff. You all have been very helpful and very accommodating to my client and their members, and very patient with answering their questions, and we really appreciate the transparency and the response rate that you all have given them. So we've submitted written comments along with two initial expert reports from Dr. Brokamp and from Dr. Simonton. Dr. Brokamp's is located Exhibit 1, Dr. Simonton's is at Exhibit 2. Regardless, our client has still asked us to come here tonight to emphasize three main points in those comments. We also look forward to your responses to those comments when you all are ready to send those out. So number one, the location of this concrete batch plant is obviously the big issue here. It's very close to many homes, the residents of Lake Forest, a church, an elementary school, an adult learning facility. Lake Forest has over 1,700 homes, 7,000 residents, and the property boundary to the facility is located less than 80 feet away from the nearest home. As, number two, as Dr. Brokamp will speak about in a few minutes, and as reflected in his Exhibit 1 report, the draft permit as written will still allow for a significant amount of PM and ultrafine particulate emissions, ultrafine particulates included in particulate matter but often not really talked about, and certainly the draft permit doesn't mention those as well. The facility will have a hyper-local public health impact from those PM and UFP emissions, including on Lake Forest residents, the attendees of the schools and the church, and especially those folks that are part of more vulnerable populations. Number three, again, the biggest flaw of the facility is location, but as Dr. Simonton has stated in his report, as have our two engineers from Lake Forest, Steve and Charlie to my left, who will be testifying later, there are, well, the applicant could do much more to ensure that emissions will be reduced and better controlled. This includes requiring continuous automated monitors that are much more protective of the public rather than once-a-day visual checks. So in sum, the proposed, sorry, the proposed facility is located too close to the residents and students, and we feel the facility, as demonstrated by its application and draft permit, will not protect a considerable number of persons from injury, detriment, nuisance, or annoyance, and will endanger the comfort, health, or safety of those folks and the rest of the public. We urge you to not approve the permit, and we welcome any questions. Thank you.
Online, we have William Clinton. Mr. Clinton, I will unmute you now and make you a panelist. If you are able, you're welcome to turn on your video as well. Are you able to hear us, Mr. Clinton? You're unmuted now. Oh, Clinton, I'm sorry. Mr. Clinton, that might be why you weren't responding. Mr. Clinton, if you're able to hear us, you're unmuted and you're welcome to speak. We'll move on to in-person. We'll try again at the end.
Steve Plas?
Okay, good evening. My name is Steve Plas, and I don't represent anyone other than, I guess, myself. I am a resident of the Lake Forest area. And first of all, I want to thank the board for the opportunity to speak this evening. And I come to the board as a chemical engineer. I graduated from the University of Cincinnati in 1982, and I spent 35 years working for a large consumer product company. I still consult in the dry material handling business, and over that past portion of 35 years, I have been in dust collectors. I've helped design dust collectors. I've repaired dust collectors. I've done many, many things with dust collectors. So as was mentioned earlier, it seems like there's a high probability that this concrete plant will be built, and so in my mind, the attention has to focus on how do we make the plant safe and how do we make that reliable? And I think that is probably everybody in this room's goal. And so that is where my thought process goes to. So when I look at two of the specific permit applications, 100H and 100J, both of those permit applications mention manual monitoring-type equipment. So the observations are visual, and they lack sophistication from what I would consider good engineering practice for monitoring. And so what I'm asking for specifically is that the differential pressure transmitters, or the differential pressure gauges that I think are on those dust collectors, be changed to differential pressure transmitters. Differential pressure transmitters will allow for continuous monitoring, and given the sophistication of the control system that's been talked about, these differential pressure transmitters can go to historian, those values can be recorded, and normal operating alarm conditions and shutdown conditions can be established. So when we properly control those dust collectors, we have the greatest potential to eliminate the risk to the subdivision. So I would ask that those specific forms be modified to reflect differential pressure transmitters. Thank you.
Mary Dryes, or Breeze, I will make you a panelist, and unmute you. You are welcome to turn on your video if able. You're unmuted whenever you are ready.
Okay. First of all, I'm very concerned with the health aspect of this facility on our communities, the babies, the children, the grandparents who live close by. What I think we need, but I know this will check all your boxes, but what I think we really need right now is a thorough health report. We have a letter from a pulmonologist who has told his patient who lives close by that if this is built, he will have to be moved. He will have to move. He cannot live in the vicinity. And also, tonight, I'll forward a report that was completed by Dr. Christopher North in April of this year. He's a medical doctor of occupational medicine in Fisher, Indiana. He lives in the community that had planned a concrete batch plant just like this, real close to the residence. And what he has said is that research has been conducted by Harvard School of Public Health, and they found a clear link between the exposure to fine particles and premature death from heart and lung disease. What we heard from the applicant was, his civil engineer, not a doctor, said there'd be a low chance of cancer. But what's more particular is lung diseases. Fine particles such as PM 2.5 are also known to worsen chronic diseases like asthma, cardiovascular disease, bronchitis, and other respiratory problems such as COPD. Well, what is PM 2.5? It's about less than 2.5 mcrometers, which is about 2% of the size, diameter of the size of a hair follicle. So think of that, a hair, think how small this particle is. Since there's such a small size, fine particles tend to remain longer in the air than heavier particles. This increases the likelihood to humans and animals inhaling them in their bodies. And since they're such a small size, they're able to bypass the nose protection and the throat protection, go straight into the lungs. And where do you find these PM 2.5 particles? Various sources, including concrete batching facilities. Alright, that's the Harvard study. Then, we have a study published by the Journal of the American Medical Association that shows that long-term exposure to PM 2.5 may result in vascular inflammation leading to plaque formulation, which can eventually lead to a heart attack and stroke.
Yeah, one minute left.
Okay. And I don't care how good the filters are, there's going to be fugitive dust escaping from this. Alright, you'll be able to check the file. Like I've said, I'll submit this report. Also, the American Heart Association has found the same thing, and then there's been numerous studies on adverse pregnancy outcomes. Johns Hopkins University has said this particulate matter tends to develop asthma and need emergency room and hospital treatment. So if you notice some of the opposition letters, there's many people in the neighborhood and around our whole community that have pulmonary issues, they have lung issues, they have asthma, they have allergies, and I know each of you all got on this board in your position to keep our community safe. The fugitive dust associated with the concrete plant should not be located immediately up wind of a major residential neighborhood. This is a terrible location for a concrete plant. Please make sure there is a thorough health-safety study. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cole Brokamp. I'm a faculty member at University of Cincinnati in St. Anne Children's. I'm an epidemiologist. I lead NIH National Institutes of Health Grants on the effects of particulate matter on adolescents and kids. And I'm here to talk today about particulate matter and the adverse effects that we can expect on population if this amount of pollution is approved. So I'm glad to hear about particulate matter being talked about in different size fractions. That's something really important to consider, of course, the fine and the ultrafine. And as we just heard, the ultrafine and finer, the most dangerous because they can penetrate deeply in the lungs and get into the bloodstream. And we know that this is not specific to cement production but actual concrete batching. You know, overall, there's over 300 billion estimated damages and health effects from concrete production worldwide, and batching concrete specifically represents about 20% of those lost years of life. So the proposed limit greatly exceeds other industrial sources. I pulled a lot of sources that are reported to the national emissions inventory, so showing other plants, like the Ford plant and other smaller plants within 5,000 meters of the proposed location. And you'll see in my report that the proposed emissions really dwarf by orders of magnitude anything else that's happening. So lastly, you know, I wanted to make the point that we will see hyper-local increases in particulate matter. Scientific studies and observational, real-world studies have shown that ultrafine, fine, and coarse particulate matter are increasing orders of magnitude, hundreds of times higher, within, you know, less than 1,000 meters from this proposed site. So, you know, no level of air pollution is safe, of course, but even short, single days of high air pollution can cause inflammation in the lungs associated with the risk of increased hospital admissions for cardiovascular, respiratory diseases, Parkinson's disease, diabetes, and other rare diseases. You know, more recently, the scientific community has uncovered the association between particulate matter and mental health, and we see an increase of kids attempting suicide and coming to the hospital for anxiety and depression problems on high air pollution days. Long-term exposure to PM 2.5, you know, obviously increases all-cause mortality, but is also responsible for increased preterm birth, low birth weight, increases cardiovascular, respiratory, psychiatric disease, causes increased incidence of cancer, including lung, oral, rectal, liver, skin, breast, and kidney cancers. So in summary, I believe that, you know, the proposed facility will emit enough emissions to adversely impact, you know, the students and the residents nearby. I'm going to ask you guys to consider the St. Ephraim Entry School, the St. Mary's Center, the residences that are very close, very close by, and think of studies that have shown that students are testing worse and students are having more asthma if they are just in the right downwind direction from a batch facility such as this. Thank you.
Next up online, we have Emily Smith. Ms. Smith, you are unmuted now. If you're able, you can turn on your video. Thank you. One second, Ms. Smith. I think we both unmuted you, and I ended up re-heating. If you're unmuted now.
Oh, my apologies. My name is Chanel Smith. I'm sorry that I'm not there in person. I'm the legislative assistant to Councilman Pi Argentina. He happens to be at the Metro Council meeting this evening, and the flu has struck my home, so I did not want to pass germs to all you lovely people, so I am virtual tonight. So I'm here to read a letter on behalf of the councilman and the residents, so this letter is from him to the Air Pollution Control Board. Dear Members of the Air Pollution Control Board, I apologize for my inability to attend the meeting tonight, but I am at a Metro Council meeting where we are voting on many key issues, and I want to ensure my constituents are also represented on those issues through my debate and votes. In my absence, I have asked my legislative aide to read this statement about my thoughts on this process, and my ask to partner with my office if this concrete branch batch plant is ultimately built. First, I would like to address some concerns I have with the process tonight. I'm very happy the APCD has a process to create a night meeting allowing a more thorough public examination of the permit when there is public interest. I'm concerned is the implementation of the meeting, including the fact that it isn't conducted in a geographic area impacted by the applicant. Although you include an online option to attend this meeting, it is not a substitute for being available and access to the public in that live format. This is one of the Bayroux being acceptable to the public. Public officials should be accessible, especially when it's related to sensitive matters. I offer the assistance in my office to secure a location in District 19 that would accommodate the public attendees and fulfill your operational and technical requirements. I'm disappointed that this offer was not accepted, and the meeting is being conducted at a significant distance from the impacted public, creating an unnecessary hardship for those who wanted their concerns addressed. I'm asking that in the future, you amend your rules to stipulate that evening meetings like this related to specific applicants are conducted in venues as close to the subject property as possible, so that most effective members are able to attend live. Next, I would like to ask-
One minute. For any-
Okay. Next, I would like to ask the APCD to help my office conduct research into concerns with the proximity of the certain light and heavy industrial land uses to residential areas. We have demonstrable problems in the west end of the city with residential homes in very close proximity to heavy industrial, which has created many adverse health outcomes for the local residents. The city has not properly created local legislation to- The city has not properly created local legislation to address this issue. I have my staff currently researching buffer zone, which resident land or strict land developments using regardless of the zoning when it is close proximity to residential area. I would truly appreciate the APCD's assistance in any research that can inform us on what land development uses created the greatest risk for residential areas. Finally, I do want to express my desire to partner in creating an approximate, appropriate monitoring station downwind of this property to ensure the local residential areas and the local public school are not adversely affected. I have had a brief discussion with Rebecca Hamilton about this and I appreciate her thoughts. I request that the APCD partner with my office to identify the best monitoring device and then we can discuss payment for that device through a combination of grants and access to other city fund sources. I would like to have that device installed the same time two new plant comes along and the monitoring changes in the air. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Robin Anderson and I'm a resident of Lake Forest. I'm coming here to talk to you tonight about some of the toxins. I already have lung issues and after several CTs, x-rays, and PET scans, numerous doctor visits, blood work, I'm here to discuss some of the harmful issues with the concrete batch First of all, the permit on there allows 8,760 hours per year, which is basically 24 hours a day, every day of the year. According to Dr. Latrice Babbin, Director of the Harris County Pollution Control, volatile organic compound is a problem. This can irritate eyes, respiratory system, cause shortness of breath, headache, fatigue, skin problems, and impaired memory. The Environmental Defense Fund states, living near these, you're exposed to higher levels of harmful pollutions. And according to the American Lung Association, types of pollution referred to as particulate matter, basically any small particles can cause increased heart disease, lung cancer, and asthma. Particulate matter is linked to serious health conditions, including reduced lung development in children, higher rates of asthma, bronchitis, heart disease, and cancer. The concrete batch plant has equipment that combines various ingredients, including sand, aerogate, fly ash, which is a product of burning coal containing carcinogens and heavy metals, silica fume, which can cause silicosis in lungs after exposure, slag, admixtures, and concrete. Increased air pollution will potentially emit PM10s, which we've discussed, different diameters, are particles defined by their microns, or less, are inhalable to the lungs and can induce adverse health effects. Small particles can stay in the air for 12 days. Concentrations of these PM10s can result in a number of health issues ranging from coughing, wheezing, to asthma attacks, bronchitis, high blood pressure, heart attacks, strokes, and premature death. Some of the issues that are generated from dust are of the, of the dry concrete and stockpiles of sand aggravate are the transport and transfer of materials, spills, and dust by vehicle movement. Other issues are water, contaminating the water, sand, potential petroleum products, and where does the excess concrete go? You have diesel trucks frequently idling, more air pollutants, carbon monoxide. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Next up online, we have Grant Berry. Mr. Berry, you are unmuted. If you're able, feel free to turn on your camera.
Hi, thank you guys for the opportunity to speak and for holding this meeting tonight. I just wanted to start off and say that I am a Lake, a resident of Lake Forest as well. I am a Tier One resident according to zoning and planning, which means that my house will be within 500 feet of the plant. My wife and I moved in October of 2021 and had we known that this plant had been in the works, we would not have moved. Specifically, we moved with a four-month-old. We moved to the Lake Forest neighborhood to be able to use the, the life, I, I don't mean, mean lifestyle, but to engage with the community. We moved into a cul-de-sac that has 10 kids under the age of 10. We're constantly outside enjoying each other's time and, and having our kids be able to play with each other. There's numerous parks in the neighborhood as well as pools as well that we tried to, we moved to the neighborhood to be able to make use of. So part of our, our frustration now is that we will not be able to do the things outside that we have come accustomed to. My son was born with a breathing issue. He wasn't breathing when he was born. He had pneumonia. He was on breathing treatments. We were in the NICU for seven days and he recently was diagnosed with asthma. So just to piggyback on top of some of the other issues that, that are arising here, I think a major concern that you guys need to really consider when making your decision is the concern and impact to the actual people that are going to be living within the vicinity of this. My son won't be able to go outside at all because of his asthma and because of his, his compromised lung situation and breathing situation. He is, he is on a nebulizer as needed, a, as well as a couple other asthma, excuse me, allergy issues. So I just really want you guys to take your time with making your decision and really pay attention to the fact that, you know, that this, this 25, 25 tons of, of particulate matter per year is not safe for a child, it's not safe for the elderly, it's really not safe for anybody. Then you think of the fact that you've got this Sofer Elementary School that as it crow flies is about .49 miles from the proposed plant location. I just really want you guys to, to think about these things and not just from the lines of, oh, well, if their, their application says that they're going to do what they're going to do, then we have to approve it. You know, I think be a human, take a look into this from, from an aspect other than just point blank, black and white, what's on paper, and just really keep that in consideration when you all are making your decision on whether to approve this 24-hour operation or not, in which the applicant has already told us that he would not set a specific hour of operations. So keep that in mind. Thank you guys again for your time.
My name is Tim Bird and I'm the neighbor of Grant Berry and several other people in the cul-de-sac, just a couple hundred yards from where the plant's going to be built. You all have the numbers you've gone through and had engineers give you the specific numbers of particulate matter that the plant itself is going to generate. I have several concerns about auxiliary things to the plant, some of which are not under the purveyance of this board, safety, traffic, that type of thing. However, the additional truck traffic that's going to be through there is going to produce a tremendous amount of pollution and it's going to be closer than just in the plant premises itself. You're going to have anywhere from 25 to 50 to maybe even 150 truck operations a day, not just the 10 brand-new concrete plant, or the concrete trucks that Mr. Garrett has purchased that won't remain new forever. But you're going to have a lot of dump trucks, a lot of other trucks coming in, supplying, going back and forth. Forget the safety issues from traffic and kids playing and this type of thing, just from a narrow road and the like. But the additional emissions that all of this traffic, which cannot be regulated by the EPA, which cannot be regulated by the Air Pollution Control Board. And right now, there are no monitoring stations out there. But they're going to operate where they're going to operate because all of the roads out there are public roads and nobody, unless you have a police officer out there to police it and give them fines for operating on roads, they can drive right through Lake Forest. It doesn't matter what the binding elements say or what the plan is. The plan is make the schedule work and make the profit. And I ask you all to take a look not only at the emissions from the plant itself, but all of the other emissions that are going to come as a result, not from the plant, but because of the plant. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no other hands raised virtually right now. If you'd like to speak, you're virtual and haven't yet, you can find your raise hand function next to your name in the attendee list.
Thank you guys for being here today. Some of you are actually familiar faces. You guys were kind enough to join us at a separate event. You've also joined us at our lake, our lodge, if you will, for HOA. So I want to thank you guys for that as well. I, along with a number of other residents, actually live in direct proximity of where this plant is being proposed. My child and children, along with the neighbors' children, are all under the age of 10 years old. If you've heard a doctor present and have, have case studies, that this particulate matter is very detrimental. I've heard from both sides where they're going to use state-of-the-art to be able to do all of this. Well, guess what? DuPont paint was state-of-the-art. How long was that around? We didn't have cigarette warnings forever. All this information and all this research and data has been out there for a very long time that's saying that this is not healthy for anybody. This doesn't just apply to my neighborhood, this applies all over Kentucky. I'm not asking just for my neighborhood, I'm asking for all of Louisville. This does not need to happen anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you.
Going to give Mr. Clifton another try. William Clifton. I'm going to throw to you and try unmuting you again. You are welcome to make a statement if you're able again. Mr. Clifton, I'm sorry, if you're speaking, we are unable to hear you. Give it one more moment. No, I'm sorry.
Hey, everybody, and thanks for having us here and everything you all do. I just want to reiterate everything they said. I'm not a doctor. I don't, I don't know all that kind of things, like what it does to body, but hearing that and knowing I have a six-year-old, little girl, and like all of our neighbors have little kids, they just crawl around the neighborhood every single day. And the wind pa, like, I don't know how much you all do with wind patterns and doctors using third-party companies, but the wind patterns, like just from them moving dirt around, like are every, not every day, but on a lot of days, you'll come out and it's just like a fog of just dirt. And then you look at your cars and your, like your windows, it's all covered with stuff. So how can, like, I know they're containing about 25 tons of that, that cancerous dust that's coming, is guaranteed, like every day we're outside, the wind, they're sitting up on a hill, the neighborhood goes down a hill. So everything up there comes down. Like, we used to joke with our neighbors that lived uphill, they, and their leaves would fall. Every year, they would kind of, they would wait a little bit because they're, that's where their leaves blow down the hill, like. So it's just natural that all that cancerous dust is going to fall on our kids, like, please just put yourself in our position. Like, I know you all have kids or grandkids or kids you love, just, it's just, it's heartbreaking to know, like Grant said, like, he can't even take it, he just moved into this house. He can't take his kid outside if this plant's built. Imagine like you all moving into a house with a newborn baby and you look outside and there's a new concrete plant. Now your family's stuck inside. Like, that's how we're all going to be, like hundreds of families. I know we're closest, or we're the ones that are fighting. A lot of people down on the hill and the, the neighborhood, they don't know that it's all coming their way because it, like, it's, it's the wind pattern. So please, I don't know if you all take that into consideration, but please hire a, before you make this decision, look into the wind patterns of everything up there blowing hard downhill because it does. And the doctors listen to their concerns because it's out of my realm, but thank you all for everything you do. Sorry you're putting this position, but we need you all to protect us. Thank you.
Thank you.
We still have no raised hand virtually, but we've had a couple of attendees add. So if you're new to the meeting virtually, you can raise your hand next to your name in the attendee list if you would like to make a comment. In the meantime, we'll go back to your person.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for your time tonight. Everything I was going to talk about has basically been touched upon, so I've basically thrown everybody, everything out. But one thing that I did want to talk about doing all the research is I came across something from the National Cancer Institute, the Division of Cancer and Epidemiology and Genetics, talking about outdoor ultrafine particulate matter and lung cancer risk. The International Agency of Research on Cancer, the IARC, has classified ambient outdoor particulate matter as a Group 1 human carcinogen. I didn't know what that was, so I did some further research, actually went to their website. And they define a Group 1 human carcinogens as a carcinogen to humans. There is enough evidence to conclude that it can cause cancer in humans. Everything else has been touched upon. One thing that, that was talked about last week at the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting was a STARS study, doing research. I can't find a STARS study anywhere. Mr. Talbot's kind of hanging his hat on that. What I did find is a Dr. Thomas STARS testimony in front of the Senate Hearing Committee in about 25 years ago. And he didn't do any research, he basically just did a meta-analysis of the research. There were some laws changing for the EPA that he was a little bit against and he was basically saying like more research needs to be done on this. From what I could tell, from my understanding, is he was arguing against particulate matter and disease from research done in 1965. Things have changed since then, so much more research has gone since then. So I don't know this study, I can't find this study, but this, if they're hanging their hat on that, that testimony should be null and void right now. That shouldn't even be a part of it. There is so much research. The Lung Association, the EPA, the CDC, World Health Organization, it's there, the research is there. And we're not the only one, we're not dealing with it right now, but there are other communities that are already dealing with it. I mean, I found an article about the Butcher Town neighborhood, right close to the, to the soccer stadium, is actually dealing with this. They're talking about the dust being everywhere. They can't go outside, they can't grow vegetables. They're talking about the health risks, the health changes that they're already finding, swollen glands, and, and children that are having issues. So this is already there, the research is there. I have no idea, I'm naive about this, about what you guys do and how you guys handle this, but if you have any possibility to say like, hey, we cannot pass this, please do. We, we, we are completely against this concrete plant. So thank you for your time and, and listening to, to my argument.
Good evening, Steve Tomansky. I'm a resident of Lake Forest. I'm not a Tier One, I'm about 750 feet away from the concrete batch plant where it's going to be. And unfortunately, I think the reason why we're all here and going through these meetings is zoning hadn't been changed in 40 years. So a lot has changed in that area in 40 years and it's unfortunate that the city or the powers that be have not kept up with that or people hadn't raised their hand or seen what's going on out there. Nobody's against progress. I mean, there's a lot that's going on out in the East End. There are plenty of other places that are not far from where this concrete batch plant is going to be. That would be fine. That is away from that many people that will be affected. And there's a bunch of kids down there. You know, there's, that's the, the fact of the matter. And I've spoken to other neighbors further down the hill, as he was saying, and they have to go out and get a blower and blow off this dust that's already been created. I've got a video, this from October 19th, and I was shocked because I washed them, I got a black car. I washed the car on the 18th and I go out the next morning and it's covered. And I'm like, where did all this come from? And they were moving dirt. And I've got a bunch of trees that would block that and I know they're going to monitor it and filter it and those kind of things. But just that in itself, all the particulate that was going on once they were moving this matter, has already affected people and kids, who knows what, who was breathing that stuff in. And I kind of have some experience in, in concrete batch and concrete plants. I own an ice company in Charlotte, North Carolina, and we delivered ice to concrete plants. They would put the con, ice in concrete to meet, meet temperature specs. would put the ice in concrete to meet temperature specs, to, once they get for bridge pours in buildings, it's got to be a certain spec or they can't pour it. So this plant can operate 24/7, doesn't matter if it's 95 degrees or whatever. The dust in those plants, and I was physically at those places, the dust in particular that was kicked up by the trucks, and not just disseminated from the plant itself, but it's a lot. I mean, if you've ever been to a concrete plant, just go and check one out, or a batch plant, or cement plant, there's all kinds of stuff that's flying around. I think that's about it. So the reason why we're here is I think that zoning hadn't been changed in 40 years, nobody's looked at that, and it's unfortunate. There's some things that went on early on that nobody was notified, so I think y'all maybe know about that situation, but that's another thing. But just hope y'all will take what has been said here and really think about it. No problem with progress, it's just right there, you know, with all these people that are around. So thank you for your time, we really appreciate what you did.
Thank you.
We have no more raised hands virtually.
Well, we will take a, let's say, 15-minute recess to have other folks given the opportunity to join. So we'll go to recess for 15 minutes. Mr. Gary, we have anybody who has joined us in the interim?
I'm not sure if there are any new names on there. If we have any new virtual attendees, we are reconvening to hearing. You're welcome to raise your hand, you'll find that next to your name in the attendee list if you wish to make a comment at this hearing. Once again, if you're attending virtually and have not spoken yet and would like to, please raise your hand, you can find that function next to your name in the attendee list.
Would you try one more time for the gentleman we had difficulty connecting with?
Mr. Clifton, trying one more time, you had your hand raised at the beginning of the meeting and we were unable to hear you. You are unmuted now. You are welcome to make a comment. I apologize, it sounds like we're still having difficulty if you're trying to speak, we can't hear you. Unable to send you a direct message.
As far as anybody else, registered to speak. A representative from Sunshine Industries, Reddymex, would like to respond to any of the comments made today.
We do have another person who'd like to...
We have two hands now. Alex, I am working on unmuting you, I don't have a last name. Alex, if you would, please give us your first and last name for the record, and you're unmuted and able to speak now. Alex, we are unable to hear you either, I apologize for having technical difficulties. Believe me, just muted yourself. I unmuted you again, give it one more try, Alex.
Can they respond in the chat?
They're welcome to send a message, if anybody is unable to speak, send me a message directly in the chat, I cannot respond to somebody until they have sent me a message directly for whatever reason, but you're welcome to send me a message or email air@lookey.gov.
It may help if you give them instructions on the settings. I had to do that for myself, that they go to unmute and click on settings, it's their computer settings, microphone that has to be adjusted.
Thank you, Ms. Shroeb White. So if you've heard that, Alex, if you're able to hear us, it may be your settings on your end. We'll come back to you in just a moment, we have another raised hand. All right. Tyler Reynolds, I'm going to make you a panelist, if you are able, you're welcome to turn on your video, I will unmute you. Okay. You're welcome to speak when you're ready, Mr. Reynolds.
Yeah, sorry I'm late to the party, I just wanted to echo some of the objections that you heard here tonight. I've got a son who attends daycare of building kids, which is upstream from where this plant is supposed to be built. I was at the church meeting a few weeks ago where they were talking about monitoring stations, and I apologize if this has already been dealt with tonight, but what I recall was the closest monitoring station was at Cannon's Lane. And so I understand that you guys look at the EPA guidelines and you're going to follow the EPA guidelines as to whether or not you're going to green light this plant or not. So I think it's kind of a foregone conclusion from where I'm sitting, so I'd like to know who's going to monitor this if you guys do decide to approve this. If you guys are using the Cannon's Lane monitoring system, that's nowhere near where this is going to pollute and the health issues that are going to come in play. So I would advocate that if you guys are on board with doing this, that somebody petition that a monitoring station placed somewhere near this East End to monitor their air quality. Otherwise, I mean, what are you guys green lighting? You don't even know. So with that, you know, I vehemently object to that. I'm a resident of Lake Forest, and I just think this isn't great for the community, and I leave it to you all's discretion. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
I will try, Alex, one more time.
Byron, while you're doing that, Mr. Clifton has indicated that he logged in to listen only, he does not have a microphone on his computer.
Thank you, Rachel. Alex, I unmuted you one more time, see if we can hear you. Anybody who is unable to hear us, just a reminder, you can also submit comments at airpermits@lookey.gov, so if you're not able to get through to us, feel free to submit comments and write, or even if you are, feel free to either way. We're still unable to hear Alex, sorry.
No others?
No other raised hands.
All right, well, let me come back to a representative from Sunshine Industries, Reddymex, that they would like to make a comment, in response to comments, please do so at this time. Are there any board members who are on the video teleconference?
We have Ms. Shroeb White present with us.
Okay. Are there any questions from board members tonight?
No questions.
I don't have a question, really, I just don't, and this is not their review, so the planning commission has already, so what was it done before, and then the planning commission changed it?
Since 1982, it's my understanding that the property has been zoned for industrial use, I believe it's M3 is its designation, and so no zoning change was necessary in this case. It was reviewed by a development review committee, and then with modifications made to the proposal, it was subsequently reviewed again by the full planning commission. That public hearing took place last Thursday.
And so what they applied for the permit, it was based on the original plans or the revised plan?
Matt?
The permit we have out for notice right now is based on the revised, smaller facility.
And that is after addressing some of the community's concerns?
I believe that was their attempt.
We will leave this hearing open until 7:30. If anybody joins, obviously, we will accommodate that. Come on up.
But I'm going to, I got you.
Please repeat your name.
So I'm Dane, Dane Mattingly. You all might, the attorneys might know more about this, I'm saying M2 to M3. All right, so what I was told, and I probably shouldn't be up here talking about this, but it was originally M2, and then Rogers Group, there's a rock quarry that sits on their side of it, that there was supposed to be a preliminary, like a short-term change from M2 to M3, and then after, for whatever reason they did it, they were supposed to go back to M2, it was never supposed to be permanently M3. That's all I'm going to say. There's more things, I shouldn't say that, there's more things to it than I'm going to let them say if they want to, but I just wanted you all to know that it's not supposed to be in three.
Thank you.
We do have one more hand, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Doctor.
So we know PM particulate matters, but what would be the size of dirt? So, because that is going to be a reflection of what is there at this time with what they're doing construction-wise.
Right, so their construction operations would be subject to our general nuisance rule, that would be Regulation 1.14. Typically with crustal materials, you're going to find primarily PM10, but there may be some PM fines as well. With respect to the project, and I ask that my engineering colleagues correct me on this, I want to be clear that the 25-ton limit is inclusive of all types of particulate matter. So there is not a 25-ton limit for PM, a 25-ton limit for PM10, or a PM, a 25-ton limit for PM2.5. It is inclusive of those types. And that 25-ton limit, which we use solely to determine whether or not the facility is major and subject to Title V or requires a limit. I believe that Ms. Hosey described the company's potential emissions from their operations, and Shannon, if you could again remind folks what the potential operational emissions are.
Yeah, the potential emissions, that's if they're running the plant nonstop all time, like, just going full force, it would be 6.2 tons per year, potentially. Now, that's like at full capacity, nonstop.
We have a raised hand that was up first, and I think we'll return to the audience. Mr. Berry, I made you a panelist again, and I'm muting you if you have something additional to say.
Hi, I apologize, this is Kara Berry, my husband and I are both watching from a computer remotely. I just wanted to speak to the fact that we already have the Rogers Group, the Rock Quarry in our area, and Louisville Paving, just a short ways down the road off of Aiken. And I implore you all to consider that when making this decision, how much more we're putting into the area that's already there. It's terrifying. As my husband mentioned earlier, I'm not going to be able to take my son outside anymore, and I apologize for getting emotional, but please consider that we are real people who can't, some of us can't move. We are where we are. To speak to the economy, that doesn't really matter here. I understand that this is an air pollution control meeting, but we already have so much in the area, and it's terrifying that we're considering adding just that much more. Again, I apologize for being emotional, thank you all for hearing all of us out, it's obviously a very emotional matter for all of us, because it has to do with our kids, and there are, you know, hundreds and hundreds of kids nearby that this will affect. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm worried about myself, I'm sorry, I should have deferred to Chair Sullivan before letting somebody speak for a second time, that's your discretion.
I'm fine with that.
We have no other virtual hands.
Please state your name.
My name is Charles Birdeland, and I am a resident and homeowner in Lake Forest. I am also a degreed chemical engineer with 30-plus years of corporate experience, and I guess I'd like a clarification of something right now, because I am looking at the Form AP 100A that is asking for a requested limit of 25 tons per category, PM, PM10, and PM2.5. So am I misreading this form? And they're asking for only 25 tons, because it appears that they're asking for 75 tons?
The purpose of a hearing is to take comments.
Okay.
I think at another point, we could, certainly in our written responses, but hopefully before then, we can clarify that a little bit.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Bird, again, may I make one suggestion? And that is, if we put more monitoring stations out there, because the wind generally is from the west, southwest, and then sometimes it moves around and comes in from the northwest. If you had a monitoring device, maybe over in front of the church, and one by Oakhurst and one down by St. Mary's, you would be able to capture all of the wind directions of particulate matter coming off of the road and off of the plant. And I don't know how expensive those things are, who buys them, what the logistics of putting them up would be, but that would be my suggestion to the Air Pollution Control Board, because I think that would be something that would come under your direct prevalence and oversight. And if this thing goes forward, I would much prefer it didn't go forward for obvious reasons, but if it does go forward, that you, I mean, Cannon's Lane is way opposite direction of prevailing wind, so you would never get anything from there that happened out in the, at the East End out there. But if you, if you put those monitors there, you would at least have a pretty good baseline and continual monitoring of what the pollution was. Thanks.
Thank you.
Alex, virtually, I think they have raised their hand again, give them one more try. Alex, if you're able to hear us, there you go, we can hear you now.
I'm sorry. Okay, so do I just need to say my name?
Yes, please.
Okay, so yeah, Alex Cassabella, I live on Oakhurst Road, right across from Aiken, and where the proposed concrete plant will be built. And I just, I guess I just kind of want to echo, and I guess, like you guys said, this is just a place to make comments, so my understanding is my questions will not be answered right now, but... But have you guys been out and tested our air quality recently? As someone just stated, we are already surrounded by so mu, so much industrial, just pollution, and with the quarry, I mean, I can't even get my car washed, because my car is constantly just covered in dust and just grime, and so I guess I'm just kind of wondering, hey, have you guys, when's the last time our air has been tested out this way? And then also to just kind of echo, if for some reason the concrete plant does go through, I too would love more information on these air quality control stations, or whatever is set up at Cannon's Lane, on what those look like, where they could be placed, and I think like what the man just shared, having them placed in multiple sites, I think would be wonderful. And then just another statement is, have any of you guys been out? Like, have you guys seen, have you driven by to see where this site is going to be? And have you seen the neighborhood, have you seen the homes, have you seen the school, have you seen St. Mary's, the church, all these residential places filled with children, and how close it truly is to where this plant is proposed to be? So, thank you.
Thank you. One more.
I, I ran out of time, so I just want to make a few more points. Based on my experience, these dust collectors will fail, they will fail at some point in time, and, oh, my name is Steve Plasse again, so these dust collectors will fail. And by looking at the documentation, I think this is what's on them, this is a Magna Healer gauge, what I'm recommending is a transmitter, and this gives 24/7 real-time data to the state-of-the-art control systems being built. This will allow for normal conditions, alarm conditions, and shutdown conditions to be established. So if, as requested in Application 100J, it is a manual observation once a day. That means when the dust collectors fail, they can potentially admit for a 24-hour period before they're caught. That makes them extremely dangerous to the surrounding population. By putting transmitters on, we can catch a failure before it happens, and that's why they're so important. And so if, again, if the plant is built, which it seems like it's going to be, our job is to make it as safe as possible, and this is a significant step forward. I've looked on the internet, the transmitter costs about $2,500, and so I don't think it's over-reonorous on the applicant to make the change, and the time to make the change is while the plant is being built. You don't want to make this change when the plant comes to the site, so you want, I think it's Venshagen that's building the plant, you want this modification made by the fabricator, by the dust collector provider, before the unit actually gets to the field. Then it becomes more expensive, it becomes more costly. So I hope you give that serious consideration, and thank you for your time.
I want to thank everybody for attending tonight. The district will be preparing a response to comments document that includes a response to their oral and written comments made, and again, that closes through, open comment through tomorrow.
Right, public comment period will end tomorrow, November the 11th.
That document will be made available at the time the district makes a decision on the draft permit, and if there are any no other comments or questions, this public hearing is adjourned. Thanks again for attending.